Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone. Oh, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners for August the 28th, 2025. We're going to begin our meeting with an invocation from Pastor Mark Key, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Wiseman. Pastor Key, thank you for being here. Please stand if you're able.
Thank you Chairman Don Martin and for the invitation and opportunity. Let us pray. Eternal God, God of all people, God of yesterday, today, and tomorrow, we give you thanks for a beautiful day, for a good place to live, for a safe place to live. We give you thanks for all the gifts of life that we are blessed to enjoy, particularly this county, the city in which we live. Lord, we pray for our commissioners. Thank you for their dedication and commitment. Thank you for their willingness to address issues that are important. For the well-being of our community, we pray your blessings upon them of wisdom and knowledge and understanding and discernment. Lead, guide, and direct them in all that they do. We give you thanks for the freedoms that we enjoy, the freedom of speech, the freedom to express our thoughts and ideas and opinions. Our hearts are heavy with the news of yet another school shooting in our nation. We pray for those who live in the Minneapolis, Minnesota area who are grieving the loss of loved ones and friends. We pray for all of our schools, the administrators, teachers, students, faculty. We pray, God, for a blessed year, a year of safety, a year of learning, a year of productivity. Lord, guide us and direct us. Be glorified in all that we say and do. And all God's children said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is the greatest allegiance we have ever had. Thank you all.
Before we actually address the items and agenda, I would like to recognize some young guests that we have with us today. Mrs. Fernbach brought her fourth grade class from the downtown elementary school. I think they called it a walking field trip to walk down today. So I want to thank the parents who joined the walking field trip for their supervision. And I think Ms. Fernbach is going to speak on our agenda later. So certainly welcome. They're here to learn about the roles and responsibilities of elected leaders in the community. And we're glad you're here. Also, on the agenda today, I'd like to reverse, I'd like to move one item. It's actually item two on the agenda, which actually is a resolution regarding the Transcope Pipeline. It's actually listed as number two, but I'd like to move it to just after the public comments. So I think there's some folks here that may want to have public comments about that. So we will not actually act on that particular proposal till after the public comments. So for those citizens who are interested in participating in the public comment and public session portion of the meeting, you can actually do so by telephone by calling 336-422-1200. That's 336-422-1200. And you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And any member of the audience who wishes to speak in the public session, you should have already filled out, or you could actually do it now, a little speaker card there outside, and give it to our clerk at the end of the dis. Actually, and we do have a public hearing today. You do not have to sign up to be a part of the public hearing. That will be on the 2045 Plan, which is just coming up. So now, first item of the agenda is a public hearing on the Forward 2045 Plan. And our planning director, Chris Murphy, is going to give us a brief overview, and then we'll have our public hearing. Thank you.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the county commissioners. I'm going to give a brief introduction, and then I'm going to turn it over to Amy Crum, who's Assistant Planning Director. And she and her staff were the primary staff folks who led the planning effort for the Forward 2045 Comp Plan. I did want to mention again, this is a broad overview type plan. There will be lots of specificity that would come out of this plan once the plan's adopted through other actions such as area plans, text amendments, and those kind of things. I think it's very appropriate that we have, even though they're not here for the Forward 2045 Plan, I think it's appropriate that we have all these youth here today because, again, when we look at 2045, they're the folks that are going to be in the workforce. They're the folks that are going to be having families, starting families, et cetera. So this plan, even though we're doing it today, is setting the community up for them. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amy Crum, who'll go through our efforts and answer any questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. To start things off, what is a comprehensive plan? It is official public document that's used to guide growth and development. And I stress the word guide. It is not regulatory in any factor. It mainly just guides growth and then guides changes to our regulations and codes and policies through the recommendations within the plan. It is a community-driven vision. So for the future, it's very high level in its responses and goals and objectives. Again, like Chris said, the specificity comes later through the implementation process. We are governed by the state and state statute, which requires that we have a reasonably maintained comprehensive plan because we do our own zoning. What reasonably maintain means is sort of up to the discretion of municipalities. For us, it's about every 10 to 15 years, we update the comprehensive plan. Our current one for the county, Legacy 2030, was adopted in 2012. And prior to that was Legacy that was adopted in 2001. So you can see the pattern of adoption. Like I mentioned, the comprehensive plan is a guide, and it serves as a foundation for other documents that do get into specificity, either from the area plans, for example, that get into parcel-specific land use recommendations, or other topic-based plans, such as the bike plan, greenway plan, parks and open space plan, things like that, that really get into the specific details of those topics. Through, it can help guide policies that the county commissioners undertake, or the city council. This is a city-county plan, capital expenditures, as well as any zoning cases that may come before the board. They can look to the comprehensive plan for guidance. This is just our process. We started this back in 2001 in the heart of COVID with our research, looking at trends both locally, nationally, and regionally. We also looked at other comprehensive plans and what they were doing, and to see what best management practices there were for comprehensive plans that had been recently adopted. Then we moved into marketing the plan through community events, letting folks know that we were starting the process, building our email and contact list so they can be involved. And then starting in the spring of '23, going to the spring of '24, we did outreach. And I'll talk about the different outreach efforts that we undertook. Then, starting in the spring of '24, up until the fall of last year, we drafted the plan. And now we're in the final stage, which is adoption. So talking about outreach and participation, we did a broad outreach, sort of public outreach process, that included an online survey, which had over 2,900 survey participants, which is really amazing for planning, high-level planning documents, with over 4,000 written comments. We did 16 community events, and these were where we had tables at events such as the fair, Waukesha Fall Festival, Apple Festival, farmers' markets, really trying to go to where the people were instead of having them come to us. We held eight stakeholder, nine stakeholder meetings with eight stakeholder groups. We had 20 public input meetings. We did teen presentations. We had a children's book. We had a website, which is still maintained and will continue to be maintained as we go through implementation. We did a marketing campaign that concluded TV, radio, social media, and billboard with over a million impressions. This map here just shows sort of where the community events, which are shown in orange, the public input meetings shown in blue, and then the teen outreach shown in green, where they were held. And we did try to go across sort of the community to reach as many folks as we could. One thing we knew going into this process is that we are running out of land. We are number four in population out of 100 counties in North Carolina. We are number 16 in land size. So we have a high population but small size. We are approximately 25% filled out. So we know housing is a critical issue. We know that economic development is a critical issue. Through our survey responses, we heard from the public that land preservation is also a critical issue. And so all three of those are competing for the same remaining land. And so we posed it to the public, how would you rank these? And the public stated that land preservation would rank first, followed by housing, followed by economic development. And what that means to us is that not that land preservation is the number one goal of this plan, is that in order to achieve land preservation, we've got to think really creatively on how we address our housing because it's not going away. That's a critical issue that we need to address. And we also need to be very strategic about how we look at economic development, which this board has already started that process with the HDR study, which I'll talk about at the end of the presentation. But that's what it talks about, and that you can see that throughout the recommendations within the plan, how we're trying to sort of balance all three to make sure all three can equally be achieved. There are five vision themes, and they basically make up the backbone of the plan. And they include attainable housing and stable neighborhoods, strong economic opportunities, connected and accessible spaces, vibrant character and identity in a sustainable and healthy environment. And through the collective implementation of these five themes, we'll have managed growth and land use. There were three guiding principles in this document, and how we chose these were that when we were looking at the recommendations, how you achieve equity, livability, and resiliency is through attainable housing, strong economic goals, sustainability, livable spaces, and access. So all these are sort of implemented through the five themes. Equity, again, is creating an equitable community that provides opportunity regardless of your neighborhood, your race, your ethnicity, your income, ability, age, really trying to make sure that residents have equal opportunities. Maybe not equal outcomes, that's personal choice, but equal opportunity to achieve. Livability is quality of life, making sure that residents have a great place to live, work, and play. And quality of life will vary depending on the residents and what they seek at in their own personal lives. But creating that environment, there's amenities that folks want. Resiliency is making sure that we can weather changes in the future, whether it's climate change, natural disasters, obviously, Helene's probably the most recent one. Economic downturns, we've lost headquarters here over the last decade. So how do we weather those changes? Changes in technology and changes in what folks demand of their communities, really making sure that we are resilient to that. So looking at attainable housing and stable neighborhoods, there were five goals. And throughout this document, the goals are not in any particular order. So one is just as important as five. But they speak to housing abundance, affordable housing, and low-income individual households, creating and preserving households for that, acknowledging and addressing historic injustices, creating well-designed neighborhoods that have access to amenities, and then minimizing the factors related to housing insecurity and homelessness. For strong economic opportunities, we want to recruit and retain our companies that provide quality jobs, increase our business and industrial park sites for future growth development. Looking at economic opportunities and bringing economic opportunities into the east and northeast Winston-Salem Forsyth County area, which has historically been underserved. Looking at economic mobility and creating folks the ability to sort of move up the economic ladder through workforce training, educational programs, workforce development, things like that. Looking at revitalizing and continuing to revitalize our downtown as an economic hub, promoting Winston-Salem's local economy and really supporting our local business and entrepreneurs. And then looking at fostering a sustainable and vibrant local agricultural economy. For connected and accessible spaces, this really relates to transportation. So goals relate to creating an active transportation network with sidewalks, greenways, bike lanes. Looking at making improvements to our transit system to make it effective and efficient, building our built-in market where community members have access to needed services and safe access, really talking about safety, ensuring that no matter what their ability is, folks have access, residents have is, folks have access, residents have access to needed services, ensuring land use and transportation decisions are mutually supportive of each other, and then creating a connected network and connectivity through our different land uses, so that folks don't have to drive 15 minutes, just to go half-mile down the road. Looking at vibrant character and identity, again, this speaks to livability and placemaking, so making sure our public works are beautiful and well-maintained, maintaining a clean and attractive neighborhoods and public spaces, looking and expanding our tree canopy and improving our green spaces, looking at historic preservation, both in terms of preserving actual historic sites, and also educating folks about our history, looking at preserving our rural areas, and then also public art. For sustainable and healthy environment, obviously supporting climate change mitigation, ensuring access, equal access to clean air, water, and green spaces, developing standards and practices that mitigate sources of pollution from land development and land use, connecting our parks and green spaces and other open spaces, protecting our local ecology, natural landscapes, and then developing and supporting our local food economy. For managed growth and land use, we want to preserve our rural areas for agricultural uses and natural landscapes, prioritize development where infrastructure already exists is critical, both from a preservation standpoint, land preservation standpoint, but also from an economic standpoint. Again, moving forward on that, being strategic where we expand, our developer land area to best accommodate both population growth, preserve our rural areas, and then strengthen our municipal finances, and creating compatible land transitions between land uses. So this is our growth management area map. It maintains the same terminology as previous plans, so the red areas are city or town center, I think downtown Winston. Urban neighborhoods are the orange, and these are neighborhoods that were built prior to 1950. Suburban neighborhoods is the yellow, these are areas that are served by water and sewer, and mainly where our development has happened over the last 50 years. Future growth areas is the light green, these are areas that currently are not served by water and sewer, but are strategically located where it would make sense to extend water and sewer there, and then the rural areas are the dark green. We made, let's make sure this, we made six changes from the Legacy 2030 growth management area map, so you have this area here by Louisville, the two small areas south of Clemmons, and the areas in southeast Forsyth County. These are areas that currently either have sewer projects underway, or are planned for sewer projects to come. And our policy is, and has been policy for a number of years, is that once sewer is within an area, it moves to GMA III. This larger area south of Clemmons is an area that previously, Legacy was shown as GMA III, then we changed it to GMA IV in Legacy 2030, and we're just going back to the original Legacy recommendation. The, probably the largest change is this area up here, but next to Germantown Road, and this is really in direct sort of response to the Beltway being open. The Beltway line is this line that runs sort of along here, and that completely changes the character and demand for development up in those areas. And so, in response to that, we worked with the utilities department and looked at different basins that we could open up. The ridge line basically falls in the same area, so anything that we open up in this area up here, up in the north, would have to be a lift station, so cost is a major factor in that. And we looked at this large basin here, as well as three other basins just to the east of it, and we determined that this would be the best location to begin, simply because, one, you're close to Rural Hall, but also, this GMA IV area already exists, sewer would have to be expanded through it before you can get to the GMA V area where my arrow is. So it makes sense to look at that at a future date. We also looked over here on the west side of the county, looking at the Western Beltway. However, we felt it was premature to go ahead to change the designation now, because of the lack of timeline or funding for the Western Beltway, and we figured that would be a better change, and to really consider that next area, next comprehensive plan, in next, you know, 10, 15 years, we'd probably have a better sense of when that area, when that Beltway section would be developed. Looking at the HDR study that was presented to you last month, or some weeks ago, they noted three sort of categories of sites. We have short-term sites, which are all shown here in the purple, those are all in GMA III, which is where we obviously would want development to occur. Greenfield development, three to 10 years out, are shown in the blue, and all of these are in GMA III as well. So again, it's fitting in that where we would like to see concentrated development happen. Looking at greenfield development, 10 to 20 years out, you're seeing in the purple, most of these sites are either GMA III or GMA IV, right on the edge there, and you can see it here, here, this is GMA IV, except for this one, which is likely in GMA V, but looking 10 to 20 years out, really coincides with our own analysis and thinking that probably next comprehensive plan, we would look to make that GMA IV, again, determining on when the Beltway is finished. We do have an implementation section in the plan, it is not exhaustive. It is meant to be non-exhaustive, is meant to have flexibility built into it, that is, you know, the whole point, and it's very intentional. There's no timeline for completion, simply because we know things change very rapidly, staffing levels change, funding levels change, priorities change, best management practices change, technology changes, everything's changing very, very rapidly, so we felt it would not serve us well to go ahead and try to figure out what we're going to be doing 10 years down the road, because we frankly don't know. So, we put some items in there to get us started and allow us to sort of react to and be proactive as things change. The Planning Board adopted the plan on September 12th of last year, and the Winston-Salem City Council adopted the plan on November 18th. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Amy?
Just one, thank you. I'm actually meant to ask this during the briefing on Monday, and it slipped my mind to include it. Can you go back to the map showing changes in the designated areas between the previous plan, this plan, right there? The larger area in the southwest, you mentioned that that had gone back and forth in previous plans, and that you flipped it back to the designation it had, you know, two plans ago.
In Legacy, yes.
But, you didn't specify whether that is actually served by a water and sewer now, or whether there is work actively underway to make it served by water and sewer?
I believe portions of it are served by water and sewer, maybe not the whole section is served by water and sewer, but there has been development out that area, so that's the change. And there are, you know, developments have done their own sewer systems, but it's really looking at public water and public sewer.
So, basically packaged plants?
Essentially, yes.
Is that in the general interpretation that planning has made of what constitutes GM III, if an area is, a subdivision is served by a packaged plant?
No, it's basically if it's served by public, a public sewer, that we would make that change automatically. However, in this area, this is, they've had development over the past decade, 15 years, have really changed dynamic, and it's really that suburban nature is coming down, both from Winston-Salem and also from Clemmons.
All right, so what you're saying is that it is already under development, or has been developed at GM III density?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I do have a question, Chair Martin. So first, let me just say thank you for the hard work and the extensive nature of trying to move our county into 2045, and I think that overall, you all did a strong and deliberate act of trying to engage as many citizens as possible, and of course, we all know you can't get every single group and person. However, I'm sure like some of the other commissioners, I received an email from a neighborhood group, the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, and what I would tell you, which I didn't think of it until they brought the issue up, was where is the focus of the people? So, within this 2045 moving forward plan, I think all of the goals that you have here, whether it's sustainability and healthy environments, managed growth and land use, strong economic opportunities, all those things are great, but I do see the point of this alliance around, how are we truly engaging the people of Winston-Salem Forsyth County moving forward 2045? I assume that it is inferred in the whole process, in how we will continue to move forward with this plan, but I would like to know from your perspective, maybe how do you all envision the people being a part of the process before, and I guess after, if you will, the approval of this plan?
So I'll speak with both in terms of how we did this one and looking forward. So, you know, one, we had the stakeholder meetings, and so neighborhood activists were part, that was one of the stakeholder groups, Neighborhood Alliance was incorporated into that group, and they participated in that way. And then, but also, you know, we have an extensive contact list, so even for like this meeting today, we have through MailChimp, we sent out notices to folks saying, let them know where we are in the process, letting them know that this was coming before the board. As we move forward into implementation, pretty much every process is going to have its own public process. Zoning cases have their own public hearing process, UDO text amendments will have their own process, public process that allow for public input and engagement. We will use our contact list through that, as well as updating our 42045 website, as well as social media and our other avenues. Area plans, that is a very extensive public engagement process, really centered around a smaller area, so we will engage the neighborhoods there through that. So everything is really, each step has its own identified public input process for implementation. So, it doesn't stop with this, each step, area plans, topic-based plans, all have a public outreach component to it, UDO text amendments all have a public outreach component to it, whether in the drafting of the plan, or through Planning Board, City Council, County Commissioner, public hearings before any decision is made, policy decisions, those sorts of things, all have individual public outreach processes. But we will continue to utilize our 42045 website going forward, that will be continuously updated with information, as well as using the context list that people have participated in this, to let them know where we are moving forward, where steps we're at, if they wanted to participate in those as well, as well as social media and other avenues that we have available to us through our marketing departments.
I think, and I'll just put this on record, I think from the standpoint of this organization, if there was something explicit in the document that highlighted the role of citizens, the people, in what's going on with this plan, it would at least, you know, satisfy, you know, their, their point of, you know, specifically, how are we as the citizens involved intimately, engaged intimately with moving Winston-Salem Forsyth County forward to 2045? And sometimes it's just, you know, making the point, and people can actually see it, and I'll be honest with you, there may be, you know, something that they missed and I missed, but, you know, I think that that is, you know, a point that's raised, that where is the specific highlight of where the people belong in this document?
Okay, we can look at that, and we did incorporate, and all the comments, the statements that are in the plan, those are directly from survey responses to really tie back to what we heard from the community, that this really is a community-based plan, so we really want to draw attention to that as well, that we heard those are directly from either residents who participated in public meetings, or directly from the survey responses, to sort of create that connection there. But we can look at doing things so that, moving forward, they realize that each step is still a public process, and they can be participatory in that, in that process as well, for each individual ones, and making sure that they're aware of the various things going on, five, 10, however many years down the line.
Other questions?
Righty, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And we have, with a 15-minute part, we do not limit individual speakers, but I want to make sure that we have enough time for those who want to speak to speak. So I would really, we're going to first hear from those wishing to speak in favor of the petition, and if you're here to speak in favor of the, basically the 2045 plan, if you'd hold up your hands, I'll get an idea sort of how much time I need to allot. Looks like if we have four, I'm seeing five perhaps, so if we had, so I think the three-minute limit would make good sense on that, and we could do that. So, with that being said, if you would come forward, you can just introduce yourself, and there's no order, introduce yourself, tell us your address, and I'll start our timer, and I'll go for three minutes, and we should have enough time, hopefully, and maybe the second person can be, it could actually be great, if you guys were, we could eliminate so much traveling time. I should have reserved a few seats on the front, we could have switched that out, but if you will be sensitive to the time and come forward, and we are ready to begin. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Carol Hoover, and I reside at 515 Archer Road, Winston-Salem. I'm here to support, to provide my support for the adoption of the Forward 2045 Comprehensive Plan. I commend the City-County Planning Agency for its community outreach efforts. I think they did a fabulous job. They gathered information for over 24 months, they reached out to all ages, even children, who, as was said by Amy, will be participating in what we do in the future. The plan's five themes and three guiding principles will promote the economic strength and environmental health in our city and county. Effective growth management and land use strategies, along with providing connected and accessible spaces, will help build a vibrant and attractive community that retains our current residents and attracts future residents. I urge the county commissioners to support and adopt the Forward 2045 Plan to guide our county's development toward a more equitable, livable, and resilient future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Manager. Great to be with you all today. I'm Calvin McRae, 525 Vine Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 2701. And before I start, I just want to congratulate you all for having a great staff, Chris, Amy, everyone over at Utilities, they've done such a great job of reaching out, making sure that the feedback from the business community, our residential communities, have been heard equally, and I really commend them for that, and they've done a wonderful job putting together a great document that I think will help structure a lot of good work moving forward. In addition to supporting and promoting our local businesses and entrepreneurs, we need to be strategic about future economic development opportunities, to ensure that appropriate land resources are set aside for job and business growth. Forward 2045 speaks to increasing the supply of business and industrial parks, which has been something we've talked about with Utilities and planning, and it addresses those things very well. In addition to the availability of land, we need to ensure that our local workforce has a proper training to make the area attractive to businesses, that's something we're going to partner with. So this plan is not only comprehensive, but it hits all the things that we need, housing availability, affordability, public art, recreational opportunities, and historic preservation. There are all reasons that, in my professional hat, I can support this, and in my personal hat, but thank you again for all that you all do for our community, and really hats off to that team that Chris has.
Good afternoon, my name is Matthew Mayers, I live at 2844 Wesleyan Lane. I'm also here to support the planning staff and Project 2040, or Forward 2045. I think, I agree with Mr. McRae, the staff is terrific. Every time I've had a question, they will spend as much time as I need to understand. Maybe in partial response to the Neighborhood Alliance concerns, just this week, I was able to go to a follow-on session that they're having a whole bunch of, specifically on the housing issues, and there were a lot of staff there in the evening, answering our questions, helping us in a really interactive session, and they're doing several more of those. And I think I first learned about this, I don't even know how many years ago now, I got on their list, at the signup list at the Dixie Classic, or at the time, I think it still was called the Dixie Classic Fair, the Carolina Classic Fair. still was called the Dixie Classic Fair, the Carolina Classic Fair. And I'm especially happy about the way they talk about land use planning as it relates to housing and affordability. My principal work in life aims at environmental sustainability, and one of the things that we sometimes don't remember is that land use is really all about sustainability, economic and environmental. And I really commend them for taking into account our need for growth, this is a place that people want to live, and our need for preservation of certain areas to maintain their rural character and land preservation. So well done to Mr. Murphy and all of his staff. Thank you.
Salvador Patino, 530 North Trade Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. So just as a caveat, I am a member of the planning board, so therefore I know a little bit more about this plan than probably your average Joe. But I want to commend the staff for the hard work they have accomplished in this and also kind of touch upon, mention that maybe not enough people knew about it. This has been a four-year process. It's been, there's been multiple opportunities in, to meet. They've reached out to a lot of different communities, a lot of different churches, a lot of different members of the society of the county. So I think they've done a really good job at reaching out as much as they can. Now, you can't always get everybody, but I think they've done a pretty good job. And the other thing that people have been a little bit concerned about is that flexibility. That flexibility is really important because we don't know what the world's going to be in 30 years. I mean, 30 years ago, auction market was booming, credit was super easy to find, and then all of a sudden, 2008 happened, we've had a pandemic, and all of a sudden, like the reality of Winston-Salem has changed so much in this past 30 years. We don't know what the next 30 years will be or 20 years will be. So I think that flexibility is actually the strength of this plan. It allows us to make plans as we need to make them and to address the issues as they come instead of having some rigidity that we're not going to be able to work with. So I really thank the staff for all the hard work they've done. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcy West, 331 Carolina Circle, and candidate for County Commissioner, District B. Question, this isn't the only public comment portion, correct? We're just talking about the...
This is only about the Forward 2045.
So I do, I do want to say that I'm going to urge you to adopt this plan. They've done an exceptional job. The planning group has done an exceptional job of reaching out. I saw them at various different locations, looking for people to fill out surveys. So I filled out surveys. They came back and said, we're having drop-in sessions, people could go by and make decisions on maps and vote on where they thought development should happen. There were numerous different times where people could then make comments on the comments. It just was an exceptionally well-thought-out and inclusive process. You can never get everybody, but you can reach out to try and get a lot. It is super important that we, as a county, have a really strong strategic plan. It's not, that's not what we're going to have, it doesn't define everything we have to do and the timing, but you need a framework and you need to have those priorities in there so that what the community has asked for is what we are driving towards in the future. So thank you.
Good afternoon to you all and to everyone that's here with us this evening. I'm Jack Steelman, 1045 Greenlee Drive, Pofftown, North Carolina. I'm also a county appointee to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Planning Board, which I thank you for. I'm just here to say that upon your hopeful adoption of this plan today, that's simply the first step to everybody in the entire county, every month, at every one of our meetings of the planning board, having a place at the table. We thrive on that. We are required to provide that opportunity and all of your concerns about being left out can easily be overcome by joining us. Each and every second Thursday of every month, we invite you, hope to see you again. Thank you. Anyone else? We've got about three minutes left. All righty. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And similarly, I'd like to get an idea of just numbers and to see if they need any limits. We have two, probably five minutes at the most, but it'd be great. So come forward, introduce yourself and give us your name and address and I'll set the timer and we'll get started. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Manager. George Bryan, Box 21283, Winston-Salem, 27120. You probably know me from my eight years on the planning board, and I was two, two and a half years into this process when it was done. I'm here today on behalf of the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance and the group of neighborhood representatives. For the last 27 years, we have reviewed planning board agendas every single month and been active in working on issues such as assign ordinance, tree ordinance, PRD definitions, group home ordinance, infill definitions, and cell tower ordinances. We're probably the only group that reviews these issues with no financial gain. The 2024 plan is not strategic. It plays lip service to the visions and does not provide the leadership that is needed to match the current challenges of Forsyth County. In the city and county, we're going through change. More renters, less homeownership, shifting populations, shifting corporation locations, less storefront and more online, working from home, not the office, and resulting transportation changes. We need a plan to bring vitality back to Forsyth County and spur economic growth. We have sent you a lot of information beginning in April of last year, and there are six major critiques that we have of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. First, the plan is not the vision of the community, but is instead the vision of the planning staff and only a little bit of the planning board. Being there two and a half years, we did not have a substantive presentation on this, and there was little or no discussion about these core principles on the planning board. There have been no meaningful community engagement in the process of developing the plan. We've instead had sticker boards, which you put stickers on, not discussion and leadership in developing a plan. The most significant policy changed envisioned by this plan, the effective elimination of single-family zoning, was never, and you heard nothing in the presentation, was not meaningfully debated or discussed in public meeting during the plan's development. The plan does not sufficiently address the biggest challenges of our community in the coming years around climate and the intense rainfall and the redefinitions that we have of what a 100-year storm is. And the plan has no teeth in the form of clear targets and concrete policy proposals to ensure the laudable goals will be retrieved, achieved. In fact, you've heard three people come up here and say, we can't plan because we don't know what's going to happen. So what's missing from the plan? Let me go through that quickly. You have it in written form. First, effectively addressing the issue of rental versus homeownership. Secondly, a concrete plan and timetable for ensuring safe housing as provided for any individual without access to emergency and or short-term housing. No targeted outcomes for the housing issue. No concrete plan for residential development along the Beltway. The impact of short-term rentals on the stability of neighborhoods with the future of UDO text amendments, along with dedicated timelines, is not there. A real commitment to walkable neighborhoods and activity centers. A commitment to dealing with stormwater drainage and flooding and climate change for the prevention of climate emergencies. No map showing the boundaries of preserved lands, including the designated land for green spaces, agricultural land, industrial plan, preserved land, including something that might be defined as in other comprehensive plans, as an urban boundary. No banking for infrastructure to help for when we do need development in an area. No accurate projections on work from home or office work. No related impacts on transportation needs. No discussions on changes in retail and adaptation to these changes. We're lacking a plan to replace and/or to compensate the tax base siphoned off by increasing amount of real estate owned by nonprofits. Effects of population distribution based on changes in workplace and the lack of down for retail. Lack of private developers mandated to allocate affordable units when the city adapts infrastructure for development. And a push to increase the number of floors in apartment buildings to deal with denser and more ecological development. And last, the critical roles of both art and innovation in our county. So we, with the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, would encourage you to send this back to the planning board and to address some of these critical needs that we have at this critical time for Forsyth County and Winston-Salem. Thank you.
Others wishing to speak? We have now about, I think we have nine minutes left. I got five, so we'll see if there are any.
I hope you don't want to listen to me for nine minutes. I wasn't...
Give me your parameters.
My name is John Lawrence and I wasn't planning on speaking. I live in Horny Town, North Carolina. I would just like to put a little pushback on this group of people that came up here and petted themselves on the back, saying they've reached out. I assure you, I do have my ear to the ground. In four years, I've never heard of this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the plan? Righty. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Wizard Nutt for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion?
I do have a question about the ability to take into consideration some of the concerns that the Neighborhood Alliance posed and how that could be incorporated short of we pass it today and then some of those issues raised could definitely have impact still on the plan.
Certainly. You know, it's one of those things where some of the things that were mentioned aren't possible under state statute. We can't regulate homeownership versus rental. There are severe limitations on managing and permitting short-term rentals. Obviously, stormwater drainage, runoff, environmental issues are important, but that's not necessarily in the planning realm. That's more engineering, that's stormwater erosion control, those kind of things. But to answer your question, yes, I mean, these are things that, again, this is a high level policy document. If there is anything that is going to come out of this, it will require former, further refinement through text amendments. It will require further refinement through area plans, specialized plans, et cetera, and all of those will have a public component to them. But in short of that, we can also reach out and have further discussions with the Neighborhood Alliance as we move forward intentionally. We reached out to the Neighborhood Alliance. They had requested a meeting back in November of 2024 and we responded the next day and never heard back to actually set that meeting up. So we stand ready to meet.
Yeah, my impression is an evolving plan. I mean, that's the whole, that was the whole message, is that there are going to be area plans when we'll get down to how do you implement some of these things, the implementation plan? And I think the broad perspective that identified those sort of circle areas on the map that we actually looked at twice begins to point in the direction of where the next level layer of kind of development is likely to take place, and that's exactly what we had done with the HGR study to look at particularly the economic development side and to earmark sort of areas, and they were shown by colored dots on that map. So I think it's, there has been a lot of work and I think that, I don't know what numbers are in other plans and other places, but there were a fair number of, I remember I put in, I did email comments, you know, one night, sat down for that. I think there's a fair number of people, 2,900 other people did it, as well as a number of 20 public sessions and other opportunities. So anyway, other comments?
Yes. Chairman Martin, thank you so very much. Chris, moving forward, I plan on supporting this today, but moving forward, I would like to just kind of keep communication records relative to that, the alliance, so that we can kind of monitor what communications we're having and the response that we're getting or not. Okay. Thank you.
Several good points for discussion have been raised. I think that the concern about whether there is a, you know, a clear reference in the document to the centrality of community impact, you know, I find that very clearly in the introductory material and, you know, I won't burn time by reading things, but, you know, reference to the extensive public participation that did take place, and I will credit the planning department for making a strong effort to publicize the input opportunities. And sort of my, with my head as a neighborhood resident, I went to several of those, you know, made comments, and I saw a shift in the contents between the initial draft, which included a lot of emphasis on housing stock and housing affordability, but not, I thought, and a lot of other people commenting, enough emphasis on the simultaneous need to conserve green space, to protect the values of streams and wildlife corridors. And I saw that, you know, boosted in the principles that were included in the final recommended plan here. I did have a quarrel with some of the initial work plan decisions for staff that, you know, and these are not things that were included in this draft. I went back after discussing this with Mr. Murphy and confirmed that what was included in the concluding chapter were high-level recommendations, and I thought they were well-balanced. I would suggest, moving forward, that in addition to the community surveys that you are implementing now, seeking input on what kinds of housing opportunities people in various parts of the county are interested in seeing in their neighborhoods, that you get started as close as possible to right away with a similar community outreach survey asking for input on how we would identify future flood zones under threat, how we would, what kind of tools we could use to protect agricultural land and green space and, you know, clean water, recognizing the specific limitations of North Carolina state law in, on the tools that we can use. There are still things that we can do, and I would commend to the planning staff's urgent attention, a process of seeking community input on that. Because in the final community input analysis, the number one goal that was cited by more people than any other was land conservation. Housing was a high second. Economic development was a respectable third. But we need to keep all three in mind in the work plan of the staff going forward. You know, with that said, I'm comfortable voting for the plan.
Any other comments?
I just have one, and I certainly support the plan, but I would, at a future meeting, I would like for Mr. Murphy to bring us a copy of maybe a text amendment for accessible dwellings. I think that's very important at this time. We're talking about affordable housing and we need every tool in the box that we can. So if you could just bring us that for us to discuss as a board, please.
Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting of August 14th. Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel to approve, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we're at the public comment section, and I'd like to ask our clerk if we have any calls or cards for the public meeting. And again, we'll have, this time, we will have a three-minute timer, and you'll do the same thing, introduce yourself and tell us your address, and we'll have three minutes. So we'll begin.
Madam clerk, could I request that the teacher that's here be first? I think those little guys and gals have had about all the government they want.
That's a very good suggestion.
Jennifer Fernbach, please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
My, my name is Jennifer Fernbach. I'm from 2006 Sherwood Drive.
Could your students come up with you?
Can they?
Uh huh.
Oh, thank you.
One or two.
Students, you've been invited to come stand behind me.
Oh, action. You have to do something.
Thank you.
That looks good. There we go.
All right. Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name is Jennifer Fernbach, and this is my 17th year as an educator with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. I am currently a fourth-grade teacher at the downtown school, and I've come here today with colleagues, students, parents, and even one of my own children who attend our public school. In the fourth-grade social studies curriculum, we teach that elected government officials make decisions and laws that reflect the values, beliefs, and goals of the people that voted for them. When a student asked me how that the officials become aware of these values of the people, I said that we have to share our values with them, and that's what brought us here today. I am standing before you today to ask you for help. Our students have a right to a quality public education. With each and every cut that is being made to save our district money, it becomes harder and harder for us teachers to provide them with the education they deserve. We have lost support staff that helps struggling students catch up to their grade-level peers. We are losing EC teachers and assistants who help students with individualized education plans that our schools are legally required to follow, which provide modifications and services needed to help these precious students continue to learn and grow each day. We are losing assistant principals and other school leaders who have built trusting relationships with staff, students, and families, and are an integral part of schools and the growth that we're able to make each year. We know that you did not cause these debts of our, for our school system. Neither did the teachers, neither did our students. But we are the ones who are impacted, and you are our county leaders who have been elected to hear us and help us. You make decisions about how local funds are spent. You have the power to help. I know your budget for this year has already been set. We cannot wait for July for help. We challenge our students to think outside the box to find unique solutions to real-world problems. We are living a real-world problem right now, and we need you to think outside the box to help us solve it. Schools are doing everything they can to provide our students with the quality public education they deserve. We need your help. I teach my students that our voices matter, and I'm trying to lead by example today. I end each and every one of my classes with the same callback. I say the first part of a phrase, and my kids finish it for me. Students, please participate in our callback. Be good humans.
Change the world!
Help us change their world for the better. We value public education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good job.
They're so cute. You're welcome back.
I so loved it.
We'll, we'll give a, give a minute to organize the field trip, the field trip back.
I figure it's about time for me to get back to class.
Ready to go.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine more speaker cards and two callers. Would you like to alternate between the callers?
Yes, that sounds great.
Okay. The next speaker is Jessica Rowe. Please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Rowe. I live at 1206 Wedgewood Drive. I work for the environmental, Piedmont Environmental Alliance. You may remember I was here presenting just a few weeks ago. PEA is organizing community members that are concerned about the SSEP pipeline coming through their neighborhoods. Today, I would like to reiterate our community's concerns about this proposed pipeline. First, the fact is that SSEP will not bring much tax revenue to our county, and it will create almost no more permanent jobs across the entire state. Further, if the pipeline does end up coming to our community, tax values will decrease on land along the right-of-way, which could mean less money at the county level. Additionally, short-term jobs during construction will almost certainly be given to out-of-state contractors. Second is safety. There are already three high-diameter, high-pressure fracked gas pipelines in existence in the current right-of-way. Some of this pipe is more than 50 years old and continues to age in place. Transco does not have a proposal to replace or take out any of the pipe with this project. SSEP is going to cross several major roadways, 421, 66, Interstate 40, and 74. Again, there are four public schools and one charter school near the right-of-way. And Novant's Kernersville Medical Center and the VA Clinic in Kernersville are just near the right-of-way. I'd like to pause here real quick because these two medical centers are of special, the area near them is of special concern, because the new pipe that would be coming in would actually cross the three existing pipes. That produce, that adds a much larger additional safety risk with that new pipeline crossing the existing pipeline. Residents are concerned that safety and public health risks have not been adequately addressed by Transco, the company proposing building this pipeline, or the Federal Energy Regulation Commission, the commission that will ultimately approve or deny this project. Risks include the company's plans for co-location, that's the three pipelines that are next to the new pipeline. How will co-location affect the potential impact radius along the right-of-way? If there is a pipeline failure, how would this affect surrounding community members, and who is responsible for covering the costs of repair, cleanup, emergency services? How would a failure impact Kernersville's crisis response services? These questions remain unanswered. Transco holds one of the worst records, not only in the number of incidents, but also in terms of fatalities, cost per incident, and gas spills per incident. Therefore, today, I ask that you support the resolution that is in front of you, which urges the Federal Energy Regulation Commission and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to deny permits or approvals until these concerns are addressed. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
You are now available. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Ann Haller. My address is 1125 Edgebrook Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. You may begin.
Thank you. Commissioners, today I am speaking about the Transco Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. There are a number of reasons the SSEP pipeline should not be built. I am addressing two concerns. First is the problem of construction next to an old pipeline. This seems akin to putting new wine into old wineskins. Purposely disturbing the ground around the existing pipeline with large equipment is asking for problems. We know of the pipeline rupture in Roanoke County, Virginia, last year, but there are many of which we are not aware. A 10-year study found a pipeline accident occurs roughly every 14 hours. My second concern is about the level of radiation in the gas lines. We know fracking wastewater contains radiation. We do not know the types and levels because workers are not allowed to wear radiation badges. What measurements have been done to check the types and levels of radiation in the pipelines? Thank you for your consideration of my concerns.
You are now available. Thank you. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kya Shavers, address 3850 Heather Blaine.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. You may begin.
Yes, ma'am. The first thing I wanted to do was ask the question because I can no longer hear the active meeting once I called in. And I know that the, the agenda stated that you would be talking about Forward 2045 first, and then it looks like you've gone on to public session. So have I missed out on the opportunity to speak on the project Forward 2045?
Yes, ma'am. That public hearing has been closed.
Okay, so then I'll speak on my second topic then. Thank you so much. This is my first time calling in, so am I allowed to go ahead and speak now?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Okay. Good evening to the County Commissioner, County Commissioner Chair, and County Manager. Again, my name is Q. You guys know me very well. I hope that if the Lord allows me the opportunity to serve on this board, that one of the first things I'll change is the meeting time, because right now I'm sitting in a line at my children's school to pick them up, as many people, and that no governmental entity should be operating during business hours or school hours, because it prohibits constituents to participate, like myself, who had to make a choice whether to pick my children up from school on time or to be able to participate in a meeting that has a lot of important things on the agenda today, life project Forward 2045, which although you have the meeting times in there, you really haven't given individuals the opportunity to get their hands on the material, read it, understand it, get an explanation from someone else if they need to, to better understand these plans, and then to be able to make their own assessment and then give you feedback, right? And those pop-up meetings that you guys continue to host, it's crazy when you don't even put out the meeting time for people to be able to attend, just like this one going on right now. So that's my, that's what I'm going to speak on for right now, because I've missed the opportunity to give you my feedback on the 2,000-page report that you put out without the opportunity for people to read it and truly participate. You guys are ridiculous. If you continue to make these decisions without the community, you're always going to have a gallery full of pushback. And that's crazy when you have the opportunity to truly reach out to constituents, get their feedback before you make these decisions, because you're not the only one to get to decide what's best for this community. It's not just your voice, it's the voice of the community, and we elected you to be our voice, but you have to include us, and you have to be intentional about including us, and you have to be genuine about including us, and you haven't done that. And that's why you always have a gallery of opposition, because you make these decisions, you already have your mind made up, and you really don't want the community's input. Now have a good day.
Thank you.
Funny, not funny.
The next speaker is Marcy West. Please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
Marcy West, 331 Carolina Circle, Winston-Salem. And I just wanted to speak and say that I am urging that you do adopt this resolution about the pipeline. This project is very high-risk. It is low reward for Forsyth County, and the, the crucial consideration with this is the safety and it going by major highways, major medical facilities, and schools, places that we do not want to have a major incident. So it's really important that we have that. And then when you couple that with these old pipelines that are already there and could have issues, it's just not worth the risk for us. I do want to point out again that this was discussed at your briefing and was not on an agenda, so unless you were in the know and knew someone, there was not an opportunity for the public to listen to your discussion about this. And I believe that it really, as a public meeting, should have these events out there. It's been, it's been taped, but people are not able to watch these events because they don't know how to find them. They could do a search, they're not going to see them. The other thing is, really, the time of the meeting, as you heard earlier, and as you heard two weeks ago, the pastor that came up here to give the benediction noted he would like to stay for the meeting, but because it's at 2:00, he's not able to stay. Many people are not able to be here. This is the biggest group that we've ever seen in here with the schoolchildren who came on a field trip. But, you know, normally, there are not a lot of people here. There's a little lack of transparency there. So I hope that you will actually consider creating an agenda that includes the items that you're going to be briefed on, not just the agenda that you think you're going to have, to make it fairer for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I would make one brief comment. We actually, the agenda was updated online, and it was available to anyone who checks our agenda before the meeting. The, the resolution was there, and that discussion was there.
This res, this meeting, yes, but your briefing did not have anything listed except for the agenda when I checked. When, how long in advance was that updated?
There's no public participation nor action at the briefings.
Okay.
Not going to debate it. Thank you very much.
The next, the next speaker is Matthew Mayers.
I thought we were finished. Sorry.
Okay. Please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
I'm back. Matthew Mayers, 2844 Wesleyan Lane. I'm also here to speak in favor of the resolution about the, the pipeline issue. And I really wanted to thank you all for the session that you had maybe a couple of weeks ago, when you had as presenting guest Jessica, who spoke earlier, as well as Caroline, and the representative of the Williams Company. What I saw that day, as I sat in the gallery, was two community members who gave you a very professional and thorough presentation outlining the risks of the project, the relatively meager financial and economic benefits of this project to our community, and the really, really lack of clarity regarding responsibility for who's to take care of things if something should go wrong, including emergency response. In contrast, what I saw from the Williams Company was a person who swooped in and did not seem aware of our community's concerns, and gave answers that I felt really didn't address those concerns at all, and were borderline. I don't want to say dishonest. I don't want to accuse a person of being at this podium and being dishonest, but they didn't sound entirely above board. It made me feel like the company that wants to come in here and put our kids and our hospitals and our water quality at risk, do they really care about us? I did not feel that they did, and maybe they'll have more to say about that later, but I urge you to pass the resolution and ask FERC and DEQ to really do a great job of due diligence on this before it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Berisi, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Oh, I didn't expect this. My name is Mike Berisi. My address is 3331 Yaley Drive. I'm new at this, so I'm putting my name for candidate for at-large position that's becoming available next election cycle. I would suggest making a new position called Funds Allocation Inspector. That means if you are giving somebody funds, are you providing funds to somebody? I would go. I would go to the area where you're allocating funds and do an inspection on what they are going to do with the money, how are they going to spend it, what materials they would need to purchase, like a school, if you want somebody building a school, getting what kind of lumber they need for the school, electricity, soil, the grass, whatever, the concrete. The inspector will inspect these things and give you an accurate number on what these things will cost, instead of somebody coming in saying, "We need the money for this," and then give you a number. All right? This inspector will only be working for the board. If you allocate funds to a certain individual, the inspector will go over there and say, "Where is this money going to? How's it going to be spent? And what are you going to do with it? And how's it going to benefit here?" I want only to be giving you accurate numbers, instead of somebody coming over there and saying, "This is what we need, and give us the money." Okay? Like if somebody's building a pipeline that needs money, they need money for the materials, but they're not actually giving any kind of details on the materials that are being, you know, spent on? The... I'm so nervous, it's my first speaking engagement. I just want somebody to be an inspector for how your money is being spent. Okay? Where is it being spent? And how long is it going to take the project to be completed? How much money is it going to take? And with those numbers, come back to the board, give you it, and see if it corresponds with the number that other people give you. And make, please, consider hiring me for that position. If you so happen to, you know, make that... Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Deborah Dimskey. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Deborah Dimskey, 1722 Princeton Street, Winston-Salem, 27103. Thank you for having me, and thank you for all that you've done and you're listening to us talk about the Transco Pipeline. I'm also against it, for all of the same reasons that have been so eloquently stated. I have another one, and that is that I sort of feel like we're being bamboozled, like, you know? So what they're really asking us to do is to take on a lot of risk, and to let them come in and put this very dangerous thing in our... on top of other dangerous things that we already have in the ground. And our benefit is that they're going to sell that dangerous product to our energy companies, and the energy companies are going to bill us for that product when it's going to ruin our environment. Because that's what natural gas does, right? I mean, yeah, I know they've been touting this for 20 years as a gateway energy source, but that's not really what it is. It's really a lot worse than the coal we're already burning. And so I sort of feel like they're bamboozling all of us in this. They want to do something very dangerous to our communities, and they want, in the end, us to pay for it through our energy companies. So again, I thank you very much for helping us, for protecting your communities, because we need you, because we don't have a lot of other government sources working to help us these days. So thanks a lot, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Patty Gillenwater, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. To my knowledge, I have no germs, I'm just getting ready to go on vacation, and I don't want to have that messed up. Good afternoon, and thank you very much. I'm Patty Gillenwater, 4040 Ivy Bluff Trail. You've probably heard my name and address a few times now this summer. First, I want to start with a couple of thank-yous. Thank you for putting this pipeline resolution out here for us to talk about, tell you why we want you to pass the resolution, and thank you, that's very important. Thank you for letting us have our public input before you did take these votes. I hope that you'll continue doing that. I know it doesn't always look like on the agenda that that's going to happen, but appreciate that that's happened. A request, two requests. One, I think it'd be really helpful for us to be able to see what's happening with the fund balance for the county. And when I looked at the financial statements, I saw a fund balance number at the very end of the report, which was a really small number. So I'm really hoping, maybe even praying, that that's not really our fund balance number. But I think it'd be really helpful for us to be able to have that information in the future. And then we know that the city council is going to be asked on Tuesday to vote on making a $4 million contribution to the grounds. They're also going to ask y'all to match that, if that ends up getting passed. So I'm here to say, please say no. We don't need $4 million going to a private developer. It's a huge... They've already gotten $35 million of taxpayer money, and that should be plenty. So thank you.
Karen Cuthrill, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Karen Cuthrill, 500 West Fifth Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. Skyland School is sacred ground. Built in 1928, it first served white children, but in 1944, during white flight, black families moved in and thrived. Generations of children have been educated there. Generations of family have supported Skyland School. I rise today on behalf of the 262 residents who have signed their names in support of saving Skyland School for a community hub, not affordable housing. These signatures are more than numbers. They represent a shared community vision, a collective voice standing for history, culture, and a better future. We want to remind this body that our vision is in direct alignment with the Forward 25 Comprehensive Plan, the plan that you all just approved. This plan calls for equal development, preservation of community assets, and authentic engagement with residents. Equal development, preservation of community assets, and authentic engagement with residents. I had to say that twice. Saving Skyland is not just about preserving bricks and mortar, it's about honoring our past while building opportunities for generations to come. The community wants Skyland to be a hub, a community hub on progress, a place for mental wellness, workforce training, youth sports and performance, small business incubation, and cultural celebration, a place that builds people. This is the kind of people-centered development the Forward 2045 Plan envisions. We urge you to see us. We urge you to see us and to hear us clearly today. The community is speaking. Affordable housing may be needed in Winston-Salem, but not to the erasure of our history. We do not want decisions made for us, without us. We want development that reflects the voices and needs of those who live here. On August 21st, we demonstrated our seriousness by submitting an upset bid. Today, we're asking you to stand with the community, to honor the community, the county's own 2045 vision, and to make Skyland a story of equity, not erasure, a story of success for all. Skyland School is more than a piece of surplus property, it is more than a dollar to us. Skyland is our history. We are buying property that rightfully belongs to the community. We say, "Return Skyland to the people. Let's truly live the vision of Forward 2045."
Rosalyn Sloan, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rosalyn Sloan, 4110 Winchester Road, Winston-Salem. I'm also speaking in favor of the resolution against the pipeline, and everything I wanted to say has been said so well by others, but I do want to just emphasize a couple of things. As was mentioned, Williams Company has one of the poorest, possibly the poorest, record among companies who build pipelines, and both safety in terms of lost lives... apologies, just a lingering thing. And property destruction from accidents having to do with pipelines. That is not even taking into account, you know, building the concurrent pipelines. For example, with this pipeline, with the impact radius, just for this pipeline, not the ones that it's being built concurrently with, the impact radius is about .7 miles, and people would have 30 seconds to evacuate that in case of pipeline failure. As a nurse, I have participated in many, many hospital evacuation drills, in public school evacuation drills, in city mass casualty incident drills, and I can tell you that they cannot be done that quickly. Nothing can be done that quickly. And I would hate to think of the VA hospital of the children at the school as having to be evacuated and unsuccessfully evacuated in that amount of time. Second of all, regarding the economic benefit, I mean, this pipeline is truly physically and economically just passing through. We're not going to have jobs that stay because of the pipeline, and I think probably most of us in this room can imagine who will be paying if there is pipeline repair needed or pipeline maintenance needed. Our utility companies pass the costs on to us. If you're still paying for coal ash cleanup, raise your hand. And so I just, it seems like since this pipeline is not forecast to, or not being built to fulfill a need that we have for energy, but rather for projected data center energy use, it seems like we're just going to be paying and not getting anything. Thank you for your consideration, and for your time, and for bringing this resolution to a vote.
The last speaker is Jose Salsedo. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Jose Salsedo, address 2012 Hoover Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27107. Hello, my name is Jose Salsedo. I am a lead organizer with Power Up North Carolina. And I'm here today to request that you pass the resolution to delay the SSEP Pipeline coming through Forsyth County. This pipeline would put our air, water, our environment, as well as our communities at risk, while providing little to no benefit to the people that live here. We deserve investment in clean, renewable energy, not more fossil fuel infrastructure that endangers our health and our future. By passing this resolution, you all have the opportunity to send a clear message to Forsyth County that Forsyth County is committed to protecting its residents, safeguarding our natural resources, and standing on the side of a healthier, more sustainable future. At this time, I'd like to ask anybody in the body that is here representing the passing of the resolution to please stand. On behalf of myself, my colleagues behind me, and the community residents and communities that we represent, I urge you to vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
All righty. We are actually ready to begin the agenda, but we'll take this item first, which is that was moved from earlier. And actually, as everyone has stated, this is a resolution actually to be submitted to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to meaningfully address safety and environmental concerns regarding Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, and if not met, to deny approval of the project. I would like to ask Commissioner Bessie to read the resolution. We've had a couple of edits since Monday, but they're nothing substantive, but I thought that would make it clear what the resolution actually says. So, thank you, Commissioner Bessie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as noted, there were a couple of changes that were suggested and are included in the draft before you by our county attorney. One of those changes was to correct the reference to the company that is actually applying for the permission. It's Transco, not quote Williams Transco, even though Williams Company is associated with the Transco. And the more substantive change in paragraph five, the final paragraph of the draft, our county attorney prepared language that actually closely tracks the state statute regarding findings that are necessary in order to grant the kind of water quality and air quality permits that are being applied here for. So it's simply a more technically precise way of putting what I had roughed in in the initial draft is avoiding adverse, avoiding excessive adverse environmental impacts. This is actually the statutory specifics. With that clarification, that this is otherwise the resolution that was briefed on Monday, I'll read it. Resolution urging the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to meaningfully address safety and environmental concerns regarding the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, and to deny approval of the project. And incidentally, that last reference, deny approval of the project, is conditioned in the language of the resolution on these specific recommendations regarding safety and other analysis not being met. So, the language of the resolution itself, "Whereas the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners is committed to protecting the health, safety, welfare, environment, and economic interests of all residents of Forsyth County, whereas the proposed Southeast Supply Enhancement Project, or SSEP, advanced by the Williams Companies, including Transcontinental Gas Pipeline Corporation, collectively Transco, would involve the expansion of pipeline infrastructure through portions of Forsyth County and neighboring jurisdictions, adding approximately 24 miles of 42-inch pipeline through Guilford, Rockingham, Forsyth, and Davidson Counties, delivering an additional 1.6 million decatherm per day of natural gas. Whereas this pipeline enhancement project raises a range of concerns for citizens, including but not limited to public safety risks, water resource impacts, environmental degradation, increased electric rates, and economic risks. Whereas the Transco facilities have one of the poorer safety records of national pipeline companies in the categories of accidents resulting in fatalities, cost per incident, and releases per incident according to data analysis by the watchdog group, the Pipeline Safety Trust. Whereas these public safety risks include the SSEP's proposed co-location with existing older gas pipelines along much of its route, with an unanalyzed risk of synergistic effects on the SSEP pipeline in the event of a major leak, fire, or explosion involving any of the co-located pipelines. Whereas the Forsyth County-specific public safety concerns include residential neighborhoods, major medical facilities, including the Kernersville VA Clinic and the Novant Kernersville Medical Center, and schools within the direct elevated risk radius or potential emergency evacuation zone in the case of a leak, fire, or explosion involving the SSEP. Whereas the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, is the federal agency vested with the authority and responsibility to conduct comprehensive environmental reviews, evaluate public comments, and determine whether proposed energy infrastructure projects are in the public interest. And whereas the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, or NCDQ, is responsible for reviewing applications for water and air discharge permits, and ensuring that applicants comply with state and federal rules and standards." comply with state and federal rules and standards. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners respectfully urges the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to: 1. Fully consider the health, safety, environmental, economic, and quality of life concerns raised by Forsyth County residents and other affected stakeholders regarding the Southeast Supply Enhancement Project. 2. Require a comprehensive environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act that rigorously evaluates all potential risks and alternatives to the proposed pipeline project, including a no-action alternative. And just to translate very briefly from legalese, the no-action alternative refers to the decision simply not to build the pipeline as one of the alternatives evaluated. 3. Ensure that impacted communities are meaningfully consulted and that their input is reflected in any final determinations regarding the project's approval, route, and regulatory conditions. 4. Require Transco to submit plans for immediate notification of emergency events to affected residents and local emergency management agencies to ensure the public receives timely and effective communication that would enable residents to take appropriate protective action. And 5. Deny approval of the project and the issuance of water or air quality permits until all of the above steps have been satisfied and until it has been determined that the project minimizes adverse impacts to surface waters and wetlands, does not result in the degradation of groundwater or surface waters, does not result in secondary or indirect impacts that cause or will cause a violation of downstream water quality standards, provides for replacement of permanent impacts through mitigation, and does not degrade air quality. Adopted this 28th day of August 2025. And again, just to very briefly go back, the reference in that final paragraph three regarding regulatory conditions just means if you find that you need to apply specific regulations to the route or the terms of construction, that those be applied as a part of the permitting process. And paragraph four is just calling on Transco to submit plans for the notification of impacted neighbors in the event of a leak or other major problem. And if it's appropriate at this time, Mr. Chair, I would move adoption of the resolution.
Good, sir. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam County Manager, please continue with the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioner, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed and hopefully questions answered. Agenda item number five is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate funds from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Agreement Addendum 415 Breastfeeding Peer Counselor Program. This appropriates $52,248 to support the Mother-to-Mother Breastfeeding Peer Support Program of enrollees of Public Health's Women's, Infants, and Children's Program.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Be happy to second that. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number six is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate funds from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Agreement Addendum 510 General Communicable Disease Control. This appropriates $6,000 to be used to update the electronic reporting interface between public health and the North Carolina State Laboratory of Public Health.
I'd be happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to transfer funds to the Emergency Telephone System Fund. This is a cleanup item to transfer $1,395.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight is an amendment to the County Capital Projects Ordinance to transfer project funding from the airport element to county buildings and economic development reserves. This will close the landfill project at the airport and will transfer the available balance of $1,234,530 from the airport element into the county buildings element in the amount of $88,000, and the remaining $1,146,530 into the economic development element and reserves for future uses.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion?
I would just, yeah, I just wanted to say I had some questions for Kim last meeting, and she did resolve all of the questions, so all has been resolved.
And I would just note that this is probably an action of interest to adjacent neighborhoods because the landfill in question was on the side of the airport facilities towards those existing neighborhoods. And I would expect that, you know, anyone who was concerned about impacts of the development of that landfill space will be relieved to hear that it was concluded that it wasn't economically feasible and that the money is being moved to a different use.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate fund balance to pay the City of Winston-Salem for scrap tires in the amount of $431,066.98.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. A second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10 is the adoption of the Community Development Grant Projects Ordinance in the amount of $617,725. This continues the county's provision of rehab, reconstruction, demolition, and lead clearance for owner-occupied substandard dwellings and assist first-time home buyers with down payment assistance.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement with Partners Health Management for the provision of non-clinical support of family and children's division, youth housed internally, and an amendment to the fiscal year 26 budget ordinance to appropriate revenue received from Partners Health Management for the provision of non-clinical support of family and children's division, youth housed internally. This increases funding for non-clinical support of youth housed in social services buildings awaiting appropriate placements, and the total reimbursement is not to exceed $58,850.
Is there a motion? Motion approved by Commissioner Wilson. Be happy to second that. Is there further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Worldwide Technology LLC for renewal of subscription services for cloud-based endpoint management software. This authorizes the renewal of a one-year contract for cloud-based endpoint management software by MIS for management security updates of the county's computers in the amount of $64,093.20.
Be happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 is one appointment to the Planning Board for City-County. During the August 4th City Council Meeting, Haley Gingles was appointed to the City-County Planning Board with a term ending February 2029. This does require Board of Commissioner confirmation.
Move to approve them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizzenhut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 14 is one appointment to the Utility Commission. During the August 18th Winston-Salem City Council Meeting, they reappointed Charles Wilson to the Utility Commission with a term to expire June 2030. This does require Board of Commissioner confirmation.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve them.
Motion approved by Commissioner, I mean Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Second. I'd be happy to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15 is a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of $19,882.66.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Linville. Is there a second by Commissioner Bessie? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda items 16 through 18 are our reports. The 16 is the June Appropriations Transfer Report, 17 is the July Appropriations Transfer Report, and 18 is the July Financial Report.
Do we have a motion? Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
And we do have one brief community economic development presentation regarding Project Touchdown. Helena Fiori from our Community and Economic Development Department will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board. It's good to speak to you today. This item is for the consideration of an economic development incentive to aid and encourage the location of Project Touchdown. At this point in the project, we are still using a code name. We will brief this item again on September 8th and then hold a public hearing on September 11th, and at that time, we will use the company name. Today, I'm just here to provide details around the company investment and the incentive package. The company is anticipating a capital investment of $5,635,000 to establish their facility here in Forsyth County. This investment would create 30 new jobs with an average annual wage of $59,217. These jobs would be full-time positions with health benefits. We estimate that the investment would bring $231,032 in new tax revenue over the course of 10 years. If the capital investments and job growth requirements are met, the incentive package would be paid out over the course of five years. The total value of that incentive package would not exceed $53,962. Each annual payment to the company would not exceed 50% of net new taxes to the county. Payments to the company would only occur after the company paid their taxes and provided information on the new jobs created. At this time, the company is considering other locations for their facility, including South Carolina, Virginia, and Georgia. This company is in consideration for a North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant and a City of Winston-Salem Five-Year Incentive. Do we have any questions at this time?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good. Before we adjourn, I actually would like to make a request of the county manager. I actually read in the online version of the Winston-Salem Journal today a comment by our fellow Commissioner Woodbury. They had some discussion particularly about the motions and the counter-motions and votes of our actually budget adoption. And I'd like to ask her if she wouldn't mind to actually bring the video that we could look at at our next briefing session of those comments that were actually made and actually perhaps discuss those in relation to what was in the online version of the paper today. You could do that.
Yes, sir. So at our next briefing?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Good. There's no other business?
I do.
Yes?
I do. First of all, happy birthday, Richard. We don't even ask ages anymore.
Glad to have another one.
I understand. And also, last Saturday night at the North Carolina County Commissioner Conference, Mr. Linville was inducted into the NCAA C Hall of Fame, and we're very proud of him.
I would just say to that, I was, well, when I first knew of it, it was somewhere around two weeks ago. And I probably wouldn't have known of it then until had I been there on Saturday night like I was. But the clerk wasn't sure that I was going to be there, and she just didn't ask me outright. She was, so she just, I don't remember exactly what she said, but she told me about that to be sure that I, hopefully, I would be there. And then, that was, she didn't stop at that. Had another surprise for me. I don't know how many people knew of that, but if more than one person knows something, hard to keep a secret. So I think some others did know about it. So we were in the convention and it was the state Association of Commissioners and a lot of people there, I don't know how many, 200 or 300. And then there was a number of awards that was given out. And so then, before all that started, they was, I couldn't figure out what they were doing at our table. They're shuffling things around, and I couldn't figure out what was going on. And I told somebody was looking for a place to sit, and him and his wife, I can't remember who it was now. I said, well, you can sit down there. Well, it's kind of some more commotion going on or conversation, so I just, I didn't say no more. I figured it was reserved table, but I thought it was for the board members, our board members. And so I didn't say any more because I thought, must be something going on I don't know about. And so while I was thinking about that, I was sitting there and they still hadn't quite got everything arranged, and the big meeting was getting ready to start. So somebody walks up kind of behind me, beside of me, and I don't remember what he said. It was my son Chad and his wife, and I had no idea that he was coming. I thought he had enough work lined up for him on the farm that he was working, but he must have took off early, so.
It was Saturday night.
That was a real surprise and this is a high honor for me. So I thanked everybody, but I did, I'll say this, I hurriedly packed my clothes on Wednesday morning, and this coat that I have on, I had it packed right beside my suitcase where I put my clothes. I ended up getting the right pants and shirt, but somehow or another, because I was in such a hurry, I had left that coat laying right there. And so, well, I thought about it on the way, but I was done too far down the road, I wasn't going to turn around and go back and get a coat. And so to jump to when it was on Saturday, it was a luncheon, and our clerk, just nicely, like she always does, casually, just conversation, asked me what I was going to wear. And I don't know whether Commissioner Wizzenhut heard her or not, but she detected right away that my dress code was not up to par for the occasion. So the clerk, she just kind of let it go, and I kind of got a little bit of a scolding, but it could have been more severe. So I thought about that evening until we had the dinner that night, trying to figure out some way to get out of it or just get some kind of sympathy from somewhere. So when they gave me the, Kevin Leonard gave me the award, and to his credit, he's a very nice dresser, and if I'd have thought to ask him... a very nice dresser, and if I'd have thought to ask him, he probably would have had the right color I needed, let alone size, because he's probably got 99 suits. So, and I just acknowledged what I had done. And so, I said, "Well, some of the guys after the meeting, they sort of agreed, didn't necessarily have to wear a tie," but I said, "I forgot mine and coat." And so, something had already come to mind. And what that was, several months, no, it's probably been almost a year ago, we all received an email from someone, and I won't get into detail about it, but I guess the person thought we were all involved in it, and what it said was this, I can't always remember it, is it was a line or two lines that was either in a poem or some writings by Miss Angelo, is that right? The lady here in town. What's her last name?
Maya Angelo.
Maya Angelo. She was a writer of it and was good intentions, but she could turn that thing around a little bit and get somebody's attention. That's what it did to me. I didn't take it the right way. It got my attention. So, it's something that we can all use, and I, after reading that thing, I found out, well, I've been using this for a long time, just didn't know what I was doing. And what it said is, "Do the best you can until you know better, and when you know better, do better." So, I acknowledged that I was going to do better and try to take the right clothes I needed to take when I went somewhere. So, that was a, that was a, that was a nice event for me.
Chairman, before you adjourn, could you repeat what you requested of the county manager? Because I think I was confused about what was requested in relation to what's in the journal, because I have not read the journal this morning.
Well, I'd encourage you to read it because it basically, you have a fairly detailed quote from yourself about a counter-motion that you made during our budget session and for which the funds would be spent for. And I'd just like to have for the record that we review exactly what took place during our budget adoption, and we can compare that to what you, basically, was reported in the paper, just to make sure my memory is correct.
Okay, so then, the reason you, so the reason why you are bringing this to the attention is to confirm or deny what the journal has reported that
Yes.
I may have said?
Yes. Not may have said.
Well, if they are true, like I said, I have not read it. Somebody sent me the article, but I didn't take the time out to read it.
I'd encourage you to read it, and then if there's anything to say, when we take a look at that at the next briefing, we can maybe clarify that. Seems that news media accepted that as that's the way things were, and my memory is different than that, and I'd like to have that clarified.
I think that, this is my last point, I think that it's very unusual. Probably one of the first times I've seen something like this done in one, my experience in serving as on an elected board, but two, I think I've never seen maybe something like this done. I think that your request is a direct target to me, and we can deal with this, I guess, at the next meeting. But it is, I'm very disappointed in this level of leadership as it relates to what your role is as the leader of this board. But if we want to go down this road with you targeting me, then we'll have it out at the next meeting. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. All righty, stand adjourned.